Council Bluffs Savings Bank. Our goal is to help you, your families, and your businesses grow and prosper for generations. We take pride in our community, whether it's volunteering our time or helping individuals, families, and businesses succeed. We provide you with the personal service and attention you deserve. With over 220 years of banking experience, decisions are made locally. We are Council Bluffs people operating at Council Bluffs Bank to help Council Bluffs be a better place to work and live. Council Bluffs Savings Bank. Hometown banking, the way it used to be. Member FDIC.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for a motion on the consent agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda?
The only discussion I have is that on G. Mayor's appointments to the Art Commission that I remember there was a very, very large pool of people interested to be on that commission. So I hope when the next ones come up for renewal that maybe we look at some other people. I think it's a commission that needs a lot of influx of fresh people, fresh ideas.
And just so others know what Lynn's talking about, bringing fresh people in. But last year, I believe, was the first year of the commission and so that we didn't have complete turnover in the commission members in one year. We structured it so that some people did a one-year term, some a two-year, and some a three. These are the people that just completed their first-year term, so they haven't even done a full term.
Yeah, it's the shortest term of all of them.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify. I'm sorry, getting on the same track I was on last time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Public hearing. This is the time and place where a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Ordinance 6208, which amends the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.040 by rezoning the 36.6 acre parcel located at 2410 North Broadway Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R3 Low Density Multi-Family Residential District as defined in Chapter 15.1. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests tonight? Anyone who would wish to speak against? Are there any, anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Can we do a motion to waive the third? Or should we have done it before?
No, you're fine.
Okay. I'd like to do a motion to waive third reading on this ordinance, please.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place where a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-167, approving the plan, specification, cost estimate, and form of contract for East Manawha Sewer Rehab Phase IV Project FY 15.09. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak against? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. This is the time and place where a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 14-168, approving the plan, specifications, cost estimate, and form of contract for the Mesquite Creek North Sewer Relocation Project Fiscal Year 12 and 13B. Is proof of publication on file?
Yes.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests to this matter? Anyone who would like to speak against? Anyone here who would like to speak in favor? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 6210, amending Chapter 4.21 Urban Deer Management Program of the 2010 Municipal Code of Council Bluffs, Iowa, by amending Section 4.21.010 and 4.21.025A, B1, 2, and 3.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion I have is hopefully Don Dirks will come up with some sort of a outline to allow turkey hunting, bow-and-arrow hunting for the fall of 2015, I think he indicated. That would be great, because there's a lot of turkey out there.
There are a lot of turkey.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 6207, establishing the Bluffs Northway Urban Revitalization Area within the City of Council Bluffs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
And that's four to one in favor.
Ordinance 6209, amending Chapter 2.10 Sales Tax Revenue by amending Section 2.10.010 through 2.10.030.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Could I ask which version?
That is the one that was original on the packet. Now we need a motion to amend that.
Yes.
Motion to amend to the resolution as distributed by city attorney.
And if I could summarize.
Is there a second that concurs?
Second.
Or does second concur?
Yeah.
To summarize what's contained in the amendment, first, we amend Section 010 by adding essentially a list, a laundry list, of types of projects that would be deemed as part of the storm sewer system. There seemed to be some question in the past whether or not those items would definitely be included, but in most definitions of storm sewer systems, you see all of these items listed as part or components of a stormwater system. Also, in Section 020, whenever the council allocates any of these monies, these loss revenues, either through the adoption of a budget, through the adoption of a capital improvement plan, or through a project-specific authorization, they are to make a specific finding that meets the language of that it was contained in the 1989 ballot, and that is that it be utilized for either the improvement of the city's streets or sewer systems.
And for those of you at home who are not familiar with the acronym L.O.S., that stands for Local Option Sales Tax. Jim?
Jim Nelson, 102 Shady Circle. This is to do with the levees.
Yeah.
Okay. This is very serious, and this week we've noticed with the river rising up. Last council meeting, several of you guys argued about wordage and stuff. This is very serious. I just want to make sure you guys all understand, taking care of our levees has got to be almost number-one priority with us. Do you guys, are you guys on the boat with this?
Not on the boat, Jim.
What's the alternative?
All right, but we all understand. This, this, we gotta do this. And this is the best plan we have, and we've gotta do this. All right? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel?
I think it was very prudent for us to have the city attorney take a look into it, just to dot all the i's and cross the t's, because, you know, if we were, if we were, if there was case law out there from the Supreme Court that showed it would be obviously inappropriate, and there wasn't found, to spend sewer system money on levees, it wouldn't make sense to not follow the law. And I'm very comfortable with the city attorney's opinion that levees are part of a sewer system and within the intent of the voters passed bond issue in 1989. So I strongly support this amendment to make that clear.
I also thank the city attorney for taking on the recommendation for the amended language. The amendment strengthens considerably the ordinance in that it explicitly spells out that this is provided for the levee and the drainage system, which, as noted, is very important to this community. It didn't do that previously. So in that respect, it makes it much more clear to the community and to the taxpayers what our intention and our commitment is to the future. While I continue to believe that putting this before the voters in the referendum is the best way to handle this, I nonetheless appreciate the fact that we have respected the Iowa code that requires a specific use for the money be stated. I think we've met that objective, and therefore I will support this ordinance as amended.
And I just want to add that even though we were handed this amendment today, this ordinance is on the second reading. There'll be a third reading in two weeks, and this becomes part of the written record for those folks who want to look online. Dick, it'll be available online on the city's website in the packet next week, so please feel free to look at the greater detail that specifies creeks, ditches, streams, et cetera, et cetera. So hopefully that clears up some of the confusion and the questions, and I also support this ordinance.
I've supported it from the beginning, and I think, you know, just a quick look at the Iowa code, which has a definition that lays out that levees and storm sewers are part of the same system, was enough for me. I did further look into the FEMA's website, and they have many different places where they determine that a levee is part of the storm sewer system, and they also have it in their public materials that they put out there. So if you do have any questions about whether the levee is part of the storm sewer system, just go onto the FEMA website, and the easiest one to read is the packet called "So You Live Behind a Levee," and it spells it out very clearly there. So I will be in favor of this.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-
Yeah, has amended. The resolution has amended.
Resolution 14-169, authorizing the acquisition of 2431 South 15th Street for the storm water and flood control.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this matter? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-170, authorizing the mayor to submit a HUD flood-based paint hazard control grant program application and execute any related contracts with HUD upon award of funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-171, rejecting all bids and authorizing the purchasing department to re-advertise for sidewalk renovation around Mid-America Center for the Parks Recreation and Public Property Department.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions 1, sorry, Resolutions 14-172 and Resolutions 14-175 through 14-181, authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the Council Bluffs Enterprise Zone Commission, D1 and D4 through D10.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions 14-173 and 14-174, authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the Council Bluffs Enterprise Zone Commissions, D2 and D3.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Nay. All right, aye or nay?
Four to one.
Resolution 14-182, authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Omaha Council Bluffs Metropolitan Area Planning Agency for $17,000 of federal 5310 funding for the Council Bluffs Special Transit/Paratransit Service.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-183, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with TJ Cable and Underground Services for the 7th Street Conduit Extension Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
The only comment I have is that this particular project must have been very competitive in nature. There were six bids, and the winning bid was 37% under the city's engineers' estimate, so, great.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-184, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Compass Utility LLC for the Vine Street Parking Lot Expansion Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-185, granting approval to apply for state recreational trails funding for the city-county connector trails project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion, please.
My only comment on this is if Council Bluffs is awarded the grant, it will cover 80% of the cost of the trails.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 14-186, granting preliminary plan approval for 63-lot residential cluster subdivision, being a replat of Lot 38, the sevens of Fox Run Landing, to be known as Fox Run Landing Phase III, including a variance to allow posed Lot 44 to exceed the maximum three-to-one lot depth-to-width ratio.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to commend the developer for including not only the required detention basin for water, but also some green space so that the residents of the area will have places for their families and their pets to play, and I think that's really important.
Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Applications for permits and cancellation, 8A, B, C, and D.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Any requests from citizens to be heard?
My name is Larry Mendenhall. I reside at 217 McGee Avenue. We still have the same problem in the neighborhood, only it's getting into more dangerous things. He has seven cars in that backyard. He has a trailer back there that is not on concrete. He's moved it over to the garage, hooked it up to electricity for air conditioning. He's put bags over all the windows, and there's someone residing in it. Saturday, he used abusive and foul language on a 13-year-old girl, which should not have been done, and the mother came down and verbally had a conversation with us, and he drew a rifle or a shotgun and ordered her off the ground. Said if she'd had to leave, he'd blow her away. I mean, this man is dangerous. He's a convicted felon. He's had two drug charges against him. He should not have a weapon. Something's going to be gun, or it's-
Larry, did you call the police in that particular area?
He did, because I, there's the mother of the dog there. He called the police because she came down there, and the policeman come up and wrote up a report and left.
Find me.
Yes.
My name is Andrea Ballinger. I live at 326 McGee Avenue. Saturday evening, there was an incident where my daughter had drawn in chalk on the street in front of the residence. He had threatened her, then called the police for this action. By the time I arrived home from work across the street here, he was standing on his porch holding his shotgun, rifle, whatever it happened to be at the time, and I went down the street to have a conversation with the man, asking as to why it was that he had felt the need to call the police on my 13-year-old child for this incident, and ordered me multiple times to get off his property when I was literally a step onto his lawn. I backed away and went up the hill, very shaken, distraught. He then actually took it upon himself to call the police once again, twice, within an hour and a half. The police did not arrive, did not come up the street to obtain my statement at the time, neither did the sheriff that was accompanying the individual. He's a menace, he's a nuisance. He chased my then-nine-year-old son up the hill because he was bullying his younger child, when my son is one that's bullied himself at school, and I'm not the, my child is perfect type of parent by any means. I'm usually the first one to say, okay, what did my child do when somebody arrives at my door, naturally, because kids are kids. But this man has lived on the block, I believe, for three years. I know I've lived on the block myself for at least six, and the rest of the residents here a lot longer, and he's just a complete nuisance. It's getting to the point now where we don't allow our children to play down the street. We can't. He sits out on that porch with guns of all kinds, threatening the neighborhood, and it's, he's the second or third least longest resident on the block, and it's just frustrating that the rest of us have to deal with this frightening and intimidating behavior. And he's only threatening to women and children. He had a conversation with my husband the evening he chased my boy up the street, and it's not threatening to men by any means. It is simply women and children. So we just don't know what we can do at this point.
Well, as Larry knows, the- Yep, sure.
My name is Tori Mendenhall. I am Larry Mendenhall's grandson. This man has been a very bad problem. I've seen him tear up several different parts of a neighbor's property. He's threatened my dog several times, even while she's in the yard. He threatened me that same Saturday, Saturday morning, when I asked him to stop revving his engine, because I was trying to get some sleep, because I just got off from an overnight shift. And I called the police to report it. Of course, I, just being me, I didn't ask for a police officer to come down, but I still reported it. And he, at the, just before that, said several threatening things to myself, to me, along with a bunch of, a great deal of foul language. So it's not just women and children he is threatening to. He has threatened me, another neighbor, male neighbor that lives directly across, directly next door to my grandparents, and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sam Fassman. I live across from this, there, Mendenhall.
Can you give your address, please?
Sorry, I'm 22 McGee Avenue.
Thank you.
Sorry. And if I talk fast, excuse me, I have MS. I just moved in here a year, little over a year ago, March, and since I moved in, this man next door has harassed me. I have a file of this stick at home. I'm telling you, he's harassed me. I've called the police, and they've done nothing. When they come in, they call the police, and he called the police on me, they come, and that's for, things are, you know, he didn't do anything wrong, but he just called the police on me, just harassing me. He harasses me, started moving in there. But when he calls the police, they seem to come right away, and they talk to him, me, and go back to him. When I call the police of things that he's done, like for instance, he, last year, he sprayed my lawn with a chemical, and I hospitalized for three days. I'm very sensitive to things, I have MS. And so I, and so things like that, and just things, and then so I called the police, they come and talked to me, talked to him, and left. They come back to me to tell me what they were going to do. They didn't do anything. I have several times, you've done stuff, I have filed this stick, and I've called the police, and things he's done. Now I've reported the, and done things of the past month or two that he's done to me, that he's done. Again, two weeks ago, he sprayed my yard again, without me knowing it, I was gone. Came home, and I come home and drove the driveway, and I start coughing real bad, I couldn't breathe, and, and he goes, what's the matter with you? I said, I can't breathe. And he says, he sprayed my whole lawn. I gave him the stuff that he used, and I was shaken, I couldn't breathe, and I drank stuff in the house by myself, and he comes up to me, and he says, well, I just sprayed your yard an hour ago. If you can't be able to do that stuff at all, you cannot be able to do this stuff at all. He was like, I'm just a guard, animals, nothing. I said, I can't breathe. I drank it in the house, I couldn't breathe. Kept trying to talk to me, because I can't hear, being very mean to me. He also, when I first moved in, sorry.
Oh, you're fine. Take your time.
A month later, in April, day before Easter, he accused my son of sexually doing inappropriate things for his daughter, and he's been there in my house for 20 minutes, and I have everything recorded, and the thing is, before, and he was supposed to be that, he said, he accused me, my son doing that, tried to go and talk to him about it, and he wouldn't talk to me, started over my face. And at the night, when he came over to my house, and he accused me, yelled at me, swore at me, told my son to get outside, told my son, I mean, he was, I mean, when he looked like, it was like he had a hangar stare. It was very scary. I told the police all these things, too, and they did nothing. And then, when he did that, he went to all the neighbors and said my son's name, the whole neighborhood. And then he's, I, other things he's done, like he's, I'm sorry, there's some things he's done, I have just recorded some things he's done. I'm trying to think right now, my mind's just- Oh, yeah, that's what, my trash cans were being dumped out all over the place. My trash is upside down, sitting upside down, upside, and that trash is upside down, dumped upside down, I'm dressed with like, I had three of them, all the, I've been wearing them, all sitting up straight, but now, I knew I couldn't do that. I've had, just recently, all of a sudden, I go outside, and I felt this bad, bad smell, and I started shaking real bad, and I looked, I looked at the marijuana, and so it had to be marijuana, and it was burning. Other time, I had another smell, I think it may be been meth. My sister went outside, and she's, my sister went outside, she helped me clean my house. Well, her daughter, Michelle, was in the vehicle, and she's pregnant, ready to do any time, and her son, her son, Malachi, and my nephew Gavin was in the truck, and she says, and she felt something burning, too. My sister went outside, and she felt something burning, and it smelled like meth. So, and I know he's had drug charges, or he took prison twice for marijuana and meth. And he also had sexual harassment record, or sexual, not harassment, sexual-
Sexual harassment.
Oh, yeah, sexual harassment, sexual harassment, I think it was a girl, a boy, I'm not sure who, but I know that 99, he had less charge of that one. So he's keep doing things, I mean, it's nonstop harassing. He called my son, even, he tried to run my son over, let him run from, my son fell and hurt himself, and hurt his, ruined his bike, and hurt knee. And he's also, let's see then, his head is-
He's cut your table, your satellite dish?
Yeah, yes, also he cut my, my house, the satellite dish, the cord, he cut that, had a cable guy come up and fix that for me.
Are you next door to him?
Right now, are you sure, driveway? Oh, yes, and also the driveway, since it's his, he wants my house. So he wants my house, so he moved in there.
I'm sorry, other than your- She has MS. She, the shared driveway is a situation where the driveway comes up, you know, it splits off into their garages. Multiple occasions when I have dropped my children off at the residence to gather, you know, possessions and whatnot, he has, he must have his kitchen table sitting up against his kitchen window. He brandishes this gun at all times. He has, again, he has poor chemicals on her lawn. We have made multiple, multiple attempts at contacting the police. We have, all of us have done what we can to, I even went so far as to contact the Sheriff's Department the next morning to ask if there was anything we could do about this situation, and they have told us no. They have said that it is not illegal for him to sit out on his porch brandishing weapons at children. It is not illegal for him to have video cameras taping individuals up and down the street, taking pictures of those of us in the neighborhood. You know, I work for a nonprofit organization here in town, and it's frustrating when the people that I'm trying to assist get into homes have to deal with situations like this that are running rampant in my neighborhood right now. We are a very good, wholesome, strong community, and we cannot deal with this situation any longer. We are at our wits' end. The evening that my child, had the police called on them, the multiple times, the officer nor the sheriff came up to acquire our statement, and they simply took his and left. That's very frustrating when our side of the story isn't heard, when he's the individual contacting the police. We're not so petty as to contact the police, but when it comes to a point where we're scared to leave our own homes and allow our children to play and our pets outside, and no one is willing to help us do anything about it, that's why we're here this evening. We need to know what we can do.
Which isn't totally accurate, because Mr. Mendenhall came here four weeks ago, probably. In the interim, I've talked to the police department. The police department is working on the case. I've shared emails back from the chief of police with Mr. Mendenhall, and he informed me on Friday about the trailer.
And he informed me on Friday about the trailer. I've contacted the community development department. It's not zoned for that. I know that the community development department has sent our code official, or if he wasn't there today, he'll be there tomorrow, because when I got in this morning, there was an email to Patrick McFadden to go visit the site. And cite them if somebody is living in the trailer. And so we're working on it. You know, if he's a felon, you're, they're somewhat right. If it's private property, he has the right to possess a gun, but if he's a felon, he's a felon in possession of a, of a firearm and that would be enough to arrest him, so there must be some discrepancy there. But they're working on it. We hope to get you some quick resolution, Larry.
He's on the register, they should bring it up. He got run out of red.
Okay. I will follow up tomorrow with both you and the police chief to see where they are, but, but they are working on it. The, they're having one department work on it. If that doesn't work, they're going to turn it over to the par department, which is the police area representative that, that works with neighborhoods and, and so I'm hoping some resolution will come your way.
I have some.
And the only reason I say it that way is if, if he really, if they can't prove he's an ongoing nuisance, if they can't prove he's breaking some laws, you know, they just can't arrest a guy for no reason. So they've got to make a case.
Can I ask you some things too? Also, he has, many people have parked at his house, at time, I mean, at his house. I mean, like when I first moved there, a couple months later, I recorded this, he's had at least twenty-three different license plates or just, and I have a plate.
I forwarded that information to the police department.
Okay. I know the two, there were two of them living in that trailer. I don't know that.
Yeah.
I was going to say those things and I just left my mind.
Does he own this home or?
Ashley, Ashley Partridge owns the home. Ashley Partridge owns the home, but, that's a significant other. They're not married. But he says he owns the home. So it's sheets in her name.
And she lives there too, though?
She lives there too. Well, we don't see her that often. We see, let's see, there is Aunt Betty. They call her Aunt Betty. There's either her boyfriend, I think that was her, is her brother, but she kisses him. I don't understand that connection. Then there's little Peyton, who just turned six, who he accused my son of doing those immoral things or sexual things too. Then there is Kenny and Ashley and Brian, who's from Vodek, that's in the trailer now. And then now there's a new boy, I'm not sure if it's, because when he came to her house on the motorcycle, she called him daddy. So I'm not, if, Kenny's her father because her name's Peyton Randolph, the daughter. But I'm not sure if that's her dad Kenny, or if it's the guy who pulled the motorcycle, the younger, that's her dad because he's daddy. So, I mean, I, I, and that's concerns for, I have concerns for Peyton, being a mother, because of, you know, what I've seen. I mean, like for instance, one time we saw Ashley, her window, the window's right there, the window's right there on my back door. So I, I go to my back door, I can see the kitchen window. And Peyton was in there and she was horsing Peyton up in the kitchen sink. But, you know, that was sad. She did that, so she came outside with her and all she was wearing was just, I just, it's like a little dress. And she picked her dress up and she had no panties on, no shoes on, and it was cold outside. And her hair was wet. It's like she did it real fast. Then all of a sudden, Brian, I think he's eighteen, I think from Vodek, after that age, anyways, I know his name's Brian, and then he was dancing around Peyton, saying stuff. And I don't know what, you know, I don't know what that was all about. Then we got in the car and they took off.
So there's kids, so there's youth in the home. So can't we have like?
And there's another thing, I'm sort of Peyton too, that. I put her on with her, is that with Peyton just recently? I think it was on, I think it was either Saturday, I think it was Saturday, I think it was about a week or two ago. I seen, I finished seeing Kenny, what she, Peyton was walking outside and her dad was outside, he was right outside already and she was looking and she used to sing something and, and he said, don't get, or said, come here, and he grabbed her arm. And then I talked to Alice, she goes, I, I seen, I was seeing a girl growl and she said she seen Kenny and Ashley there, but Kenny had a pink castor arm. So I, you know, I'm just kind of concerned because the way I've, I've seen, I kind of seen there might be some, you know.
I'll follow up with Mr. Mendenhall tomorrow.
Okay. And can I ask one other thing? What can I do with him throwing my yard like that for me? I'm very sensitive of a lot, again, if I love lavender. But I said, I mean, he goes to my yard, throwing my yard and I get, I get paralyzed, I'm shaking. And the thing I told him before that.
I, I don't know what.
Should she get a restraining order to keep him out of there?
And the thing is, he's, the thing is, I'm sure driveway, so it's like, and the thing is, it comes to my yard too. And she just played my yard, I mean, so I can protect myself or can I, you know, so he doesn't throw my yard anymore.
You know, with regard to, with regard to whether you can or should get a restraining order, one of the things you can do is you can go up to the courthouse, to the third floor.
Okay.
And go to the window there. I won't tell you which exact window because it'll just be confusing with the directions. If you ask any of them, they'll send you to the right window. The magistrates on that floor, they're, they're the, there's some of the judges. They, they're, they're in charge of restraining orders and things of that nature, generally speaking. And it sounds to me like you, you need to speak to the court folks.
Okay.
We hear the, you know, the, the mayor and then the council, we don't really enforce that part of the law.
Okay.
That, that, that's more done by the court system of the state. And so that's where you, those are the folks you really need to speak with.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know where else.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's not, it's not intuitive in the least. And so I, I'm glad I'm able to let you know where, where.
I don't know, think properly. So this whole time I was trying to think properly and record things, this thing, you know, to see what's going on. But this has been over a year and this man is still harassing me. And he goes to me, goes to a neighbor across the street, goes to, first they're in Alice, then go to the next neighbor, and now, this is just, you know.
I'd encourage you to go tomorrow if you can because, you know, these things, as they go longer and longer and having some experience in, in the law cases, not quite like this one, but some similar, believe it or not. The longer they go on, you know, it, it just gets worse and worse on so many levels and it could get very worse.
And to Mr. Watson's point, if you go up there, you know, he, he referenced that, you know, you can talk to them about it.
Okay.
And they even have forms that, that you, that can be filled in or, or somewhat self-explanatory. So it helps expedite the process so that you can do it yourself without having to go through an attorney.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for helping this. Anyhow, we can get this, most appreciative.
Thank you.
I'll contact you tomorrow, Claire. Mark?
Mark Hanson, one ten. Hi Claire, another thing, always have your video camera out. Record everything, document. Obviously, words, words are great, but video evidence is always much easier. Completely different note, I had the pleasure this weekend of being out at West Fair. We had a new promoter in town here, Running Country on the River. And of course, the worst of worst things happened. We had a big rainstorm come through, very dangerous and stuff. And I just want to say, I found everything they did was very professional. Not only, you know, the promoters, but also our law enforcements, you know, both locally and even extended locally, who were helping out. And I, I would love to see this group back because they did a very professional group. Bad circumstances, but I, I just wanted to voice some approval from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Nelson, one oh two, Shirley Circle. I'm going to change. I won't talk about votes. This is not an election year for city council. You guys know, and I've ran for city council before, everybody on the city council has beaten me, okay? You guys have all done that. My problem is showing up for work. Councilman Brennigan, where were you today for the study session?
I'm recovering from four broken fractures in my foot and a severely damaged ligament. So at home, I watch the study session with my foot elevated.
Where were you for the study session? If I, I've gone to work after knee surgery. If you can't go to work, the kitchen's too hot, don't come to the kitchen. This really upsets me. You miss more meetings than anybody else up here. And I don't think that's an excuse. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I want to respond to that. For folks listening at home, there's an afternoon study session. I've been on disability since April third, so I'm on limited work in my real life and I'm on limited work here in the council's meetings. I'm here this evening. I'm here every evening to vote. And in the afternoon, I am listening to the council meeting on TV, which are now televised. Any questions I have in preparation to vote on the agenda items, those questions are discussed with city staff prior to the seven P M. meeting.
And I just concur that, that is exactly what happened today, so.
Yes. But the good news is I graduated from a wheelchair to crutches, so I'm so excited to be standing up.
If there's nobody else, anything from the council?
I just wanted to publicly thank Future Foam. The Canesville Tinley Neighborhood has expanded their boundaries. And when they did that, they did a special help day to help people get rid of furniture, things that they, you know, needed to get off their property and couldn't do themselves. And Future Foam stepped up to partner with them. And the feedback I got from the neighbors was just incredible. And I know they thanked you, but I just want to make sure you know how much we appreciate as a city, you stepping up and being such a great business partner.
Really some exciting things happening in that neighborhood.
Yeah.
Exciting.
In the spirit of community improvement, there was another recent event sponsored by an impromptu alliance of churches, an organization they have put together called Love Council Bluffs. And they got together on a Saturday, about two hundred and fifty people strong, and did a lot of work through, through the community, a lot of that storm-related. And so, so their efforts were well timed and well appreciated. And it's great to see people turning out to help their neighbors across the community.
And as Al knows, that same group helped us clean up the homeless community about two months ago. So they're a good resource for the city. All right, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you. Have a good night.